Call to order, the Delaware County Commissioners meeting Monday, July 1st, 2019. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'd like to take a moment to go to your faith, to remember the former Commissioner Larry Crouch, who has passed away. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting today, in Monday, and no public hearing. So, we are going to request that the probation appointment be tabled.
Are you with the roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Here. Mr. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Reagan?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Now, if we could do the table.
I'll make a motion to keep the flatland resources table business.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Just for the Commissioners' information, the probation appointment is actually for the committee corrections, and that should be on the agenda for the 15th.
Thank you.
Because they have a meeting, I think, next week, too. They've got some reappointment, or some appointments to make, so.
Thank you. On the table.
We don't need a motion for that.
No, you really, it's not, it shouldn't be on the agenda, it should be on the agenda for the 15th.
Okay, just drink it, okay. Thank you. Approval of minutes.
So, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Okay, contracts. And do you have a project?
Good morning, Commissioners. This contract is for the bridge replacement on 600 West over York Prairie Creek. This contract is necessary to receive federal funding towards construction. This project will go to letting in February. I just need your approval on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's the one just north of Bloom Beach.
Yes.
I'll sit by them. Thank you. And the tree removal, would Robert like to speak on that behalf?
This is a contract for some removal, I think, up in the industrial center.
Yes.
It's gone through, a redevelopment project Brad Cookett was sponsoring. I reviewed the contract, they've got, it's okay, there's no problems with it, it's ready for the Commissioners' final action.
I've been working with Brad on this, and so it's underway right now.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you. Resolutions 2019-024.
Resolution 2019-024 is a resolution for approval for the Highway Department to perform some work as described in the resolution. Under the statutes, if the Highway Department's going to engage any work over $100,000 gross value, then the Commissioners make a decision, we did this a couple years ago, decision that whether it's more cost-effective to use our own department or bid it out, Mr. Jesse's made a determination that it's better to use our own employees, our own department, more cost-effective, so that's what this resolution's for.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-024.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Would like to make note that it's on 700 West, and it goes south down to the county line, so we appreciate Robert getting that taken care of. Okay. Let the officials, can we do the edit plan, please? How many other?
I've provided a draft of the edit plan for your review. As you know, there were a series of meetings with the towns in the county. This is the three-year edit plan, it starts today, July 1st, 2019, go through June 30th, 2022. There are various projects on there. We have the information as to the income, and what's projected from the edit for the next three years, based on information from the State Board of Accounts, and our financial consultant, and this is the plan that meets the criteria.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you, John, for working on that. Okay. Any department head, let the officials here today like to speak?
John?
Yes, sir.
Have you received anything back from the mayor on a plan on their EMS?
No.
Jason, have you or Paul received any information from the mayor or Chief Eddie Bell over EMS, how they're going to do it, or? Because I know you made mention in the meeting that Mrs. Powell had about toning systems and everything else, so I'm sure they'd have to get with you to figure out how much that's going to cost to have all that done, if they're going to put it in there. I just wondered if.
My fear is, is they show up at dispatch and say, hey, we're.
Our ambulances are in the buildings.
Yeah, go ahead.
Start turning them out, so.
How are we going to address that, if that happens?
Well, Singleton, Director, 911. If they just show up and say, here, we're ready to go, I believe there's too much liability for us to accept, just to do it without. We don't have any specific area that they're going to run, how they're going to run. So, I would be inclined, if they just showed up and said, here, do it, to say, sorry, we're not going to do it, we're not ready.
Okay. I would support you on that.
I would, too.
I could resend a letter to the mayor, again, asking for a meeting to discuss the plan, in a coverage, Chief Bell. And he indicated at the 911 meeting that we had, what, a couple weeks ago, that he's already dealt with it, but that hasn't filtered down to me and/or you, or evidently.
Yeah, you could resend that, John, I'd appreciate it.
And my stance has been all along, that the more different we are, the more that agencies want things their own way, the more likelihood that we're going to make a mistake, and I don't want that to fall back on us, you know? If we get a plan, we're going to try to do everything we can to make it succeed, if that's what happens, but we need a plan.
And it's what we've been asking for ever since, for them to send us a plan, so, you know, we can deal with however we have to with Delaware County EMS, and, you know, even what you need to do at 911.
Correct.
And without a plan, and none of us knowing anything, there's not much we can do.
Well, there's also the issue of ALS intercepts.
Yeah.
And the interlocal agreement, that still hasn't even been discussed.
Well, I know in that meeting that they had, I can't remember what the lady's name is, I got it from talk, that it's going to be their new.
Rachel Clerk.
Yeah. Deputy Director, or Director, or whatever of their EMS. She didn't even really say if it was going to be Delaware County EMS that was going to do the intercept, or if they were going to go outside and have another company come in and do the intercepts. Now, if they're a private, how do we dispatch a private company?
Well, if there's a contract that they are doing work for the city or county, if they get radios, then we could dispatch them.
Okay.
For only what their contract specifies for. But as far as I know, Eaton EMS is the only agency that has the Delaware County frequency, is that right, Jason? Because in the past, they have done work for the county, is that right?
Sort of.
Okay. But they could only use the 800 system if they're doing work for the county.
Now, if they do all this, now, won't, like, all of our radios have to be reprogrammed?
All depends on what channels, what frequencies. They could just say dispatch on the fire channel.
Mm-hmm. I think that's going to complicate the fire channel too much.
I tend to agree with that, because if you have a fire going, and it's going to make that dispatcher responsible for fire and incidents.
It's too crowded now, I don't.
That will work. Especially with the volunteer units on it, as well. I don't know, it's all and none done to all of us.
Yeah. Yeah, John, you can send that letter, so we can try to get some kind of information from the city.
I will send it out today.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can deliver?
Yes.
Can't imagine how much training you'd have to do, your system coming in.
That's another unknown, until we know what they're going to do in the area.
Yeah. Appreciate you.
Paul? Anything else? Sure. Hold on, sorry. Right.
It's all right. Ron Quaken Bush, President of the Delaware County Council. For the information of the Commissioners, the councils discussed this somewhat, advice that has been given to both of those departments is to submit your budgets as though nothing changes, that we're in 100% support of the programs we have now, the way the Commissioners are managing both operations. And as, just a little side remark, which you know I always have, I was involved in these, both these programs, as they started their new lives, and some of the discussions that Paul was talking this morning were the very things we discussed at the time to create what we have here in Delaware County. It's an ironic thing that people here, 25, 35 years later, actually, are astute enough to understand that, as this has been built over the years, it's been studied and discussed, and I congratulate you for your stand.
Ron, we appreciate all your fast work on that, because it's not really broken, but somebody wants to dismantle that sand. Okay, how about the monthly, weekly reports, the Ways and Majors, in front of you? Payment of claim of $5,432,760.49.
Make a motion to pay man of claims.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you. And now it's time for the public, for comments, anybody visiting? We do have some visitors. We have a professor, like, I believe, that has some students from Ball State. We'd like for you to come and tell us a little bit about your, yes, we have to, they just come.
You want me to come up?
Please. Put you on the spot, but we always like to have guests.
Hi there. My name's Terry Heifetz, I'm a lecturer of telecommunications at Ball State, and with us, we have seven students from Sichuan University in China, who are in a program, it's called one plus two plus one. They study for one year in China, two years at Ball State, their senior year in China, and they get degrees from both universities. They're journalism students, and so we're introducing them to the American system of legislative, the way things work.
Thank you for bringing them.
And so, they're here to cover this as a journalist, so they may ask questions afterwards, so anybody who's spoken today would please be nice to them. And I would appreciate that very much.
Thank you for bringing them.
Thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else?
Linda Hanson, 1400 West North, Muncie, Indiana. And I am here, actually, on behalf of the League of Women Voters. I would like to ask if the Commissioners would be willing, if I can actually persuade the city, we've approached them as well, to hold an open forum, if you will, to get information about EMS out to the public. What has come out in the papers has been confusing. We know that all the information's not out, you're not getting it, City Council's not getting it, the public is not getting it. If the League could arrange to have an open forum on the EMS services proposed by the city, and what Delaware County actually has in place, would you be willing to participate?
Well, we want Paul and Jason there, that's for sure.
Yes.
Jason, are you all willing? I mean, we can take a lot of your records and financials.
Jason Rogers, Director of Emergency Management. We're an open book, and so, I mean, we've, I've spent more time with Freedom of Information Act requests over the last six months. It doesn't matter what the information is that we give, people aren't going to believe what they read, I don't know what else to do. I certainly will sit down with any group and discuss that. But I'll be honest with you, this has taken an awful lot of time away from the programs and projects that we're trying to work on. I'm having some issues, you know, outside of this political stuff, so it's becoming very frustrating, and I just, my concern is, I just did this with the city, and I spent three days gathering that information. I'm more than willing to, you know, provide that information as it comes available, but who's the next?
And that was recorded also. Linda, was anybody there from the League?
Yes, but I don't, I don't have, is there a recording of that as well?
Well, I think we don't.
It is. Yes.
Okay. I looked online, and maybe not the right place.
The city didn't stream it live, but they posted on a personal YouTube page.
Now, you can stream Roger Overby's YouTube page, isn't it? You can go to that.
Roger Overby's?
Yeah.
If you check the Star Press article, we've got a link to it in the base of it.
So, if that would cover it, then, because you have been putting a lot of time and effort.
That's true.
And.
I mean, this is frustrating for you, it's frustrating for the public, I know city council members for whom it's frustrating, and I think we would just all like to see it resolved.
Oh, I think we would, too. And don't get me wrong, I'm not taking issue with being asked to do it, it's just that, it's, I see the requests stacking up, and I'm providing the same information over and over and over again, and it doesn't matter.
If you watch the video, Jason brought in a whole box of numbers, everything, and went over it with him, you know, all we want to know is, what type of plan do they have to move forward, and we can't get it, and I don't think the public's getting it. The only thing that we're getting, to me, from the chief and the mayor, is his city council lies about everything, and they have a plan put together, and they're going to go forward with it, but what is your plan?
I know he's giving it out.
Linda, before you sit down, I'd like to recommend that maybe you take your officer, at least, and visit Jason and Paul on the site, because it's very interesting. Paul, you'd be, you're welcome to have four or five people come and watch, because to see how this staff. And go back into the training room, and how long does it take for someone to be trained? Six months.
It varies, months.
Yeah. But them adding a different procedure, it's just, like, can't be picked up.
John, I understand that.
Yeah, so that'd be one place I'd suggest you visit.
Does the League of Women Voters go to the city council meeting and ask questions?
Yes. They don't always ask, but.
I'm not, I've not seen any, I've not seen anything yet. I'd like the League of Women Voters and the public to go to the city council meeting and ask questions. That's what I would like to see.
Well, even the city council members are in the dark.
Right, they're not getting the information.
Yeah, there's.
Because we've been talking with them.
Yeah, that's what's sad.
I mean, after that meeting, and we spent several days putting that information together to be able to answer those questions, I emailed another, another document, I mean, it was, I've sent them probably thousands of pages of information that they've requested and asked for, and that, you know, some of it has to be research, some of it has to be, they're asking, they're asking technical questions, you know, I know that they've reached out to the other EMS agencies, everything. I provided the city council with an email when we met a year ago, February, and every single one of those emails has been, those people, I reached out to that did Firebase EMS, all throughout East Central Indiana, I know that the city council has re emailed those people, because they didn't believe my answer was, even though I provided the email with them. I mean, it's just, listen, we're starting to go in circles here.
Absolutely.
And it's becoming very frustrating. You know, we've approached the hospital and said, what's, what's the situation for the community? And this is a political hotbed, they don't want to get involved in it. And I think that's a damn shame, that the hospital's stance is, we need to talk to our lawyer. And that, that.
I agree.
I'm very frustrated with that, so.
And it was basically stated in the meeting, if Muncie Fire just wants to provide basic life support, that's okay.
Yeah, and that's what they've been doing.
Right, the point being is, is they don't want to use us, so Muncie will then become an island, you will lose all paramedics, or they're going to try to do something else that they can make money at, you know, they've talked about IU providing paramedics. IU doesn't have enough paramedics to do it. They have one truck in Muncie, staffed at the hospital, I don't know that it's 24 hours a day, and it does transfers to Indianapolis, and Blackford County, and Jay County, and so the things that are being thrown out there as, hey, maybe we could probably do that, I feel are a smokescreen, because the hospital saying that we have no opinion of this, basically is saying, if you want to go back to the 1970s era of emergency medicine, which is, load them up in a truck and drive to the hospital as fast as you want, they're, all hospitals are going to endorse that. They're going to just say, that's on you, it's up to the political jurisdictions to make that decision. And if that's the way that the city of Muncie is going to run that program, I'm moving out of the city of Muncie. That's me personally.
So, one of the things to do is, we're going to have another mayor in five months. You know, are they going to rush it through before you have a new mayor? You know, they've already bought the ambulances, and from the Board of Works meeting that I watched, they purchased everything before they even went to the Board of Works to get approval to purchase the items. And from what I got from Mrs. Powell, in the meeting that she had held, is there was some money spent out of, the way it looked, unappropriated money, that they're going to have to look into that, so that they used unappropriated money to purchase the ambulances and everything, I mean, it's, everything we've done, we've been out in the open with it, and we've had 50, 60, 70 people sitting in here, at times going at us over things that we've done. But I don't see it over at the city, and we are talking about people's lives now.
And don't forget that the mayor's also sent his notice six months ago.
For 911.
To a lot of the 911, actually, eight months ago, because it was November of 2018.
And we were told, like, the 911 calls, all we have to do is relay.
Correct.
Relay can mean cellphone, pager, you know, and this might sound funny, but a back signal up on top of the building that just pops up, and you run the dispatch, and we run out and hand it out to you? I mean, relay can mean anything, and he doesn't understand some of this stuff, so, I don't know. It just worries me, and if I lived in the city of Muncie, I would probably be at every meeting, asking every questions I could, and if he's sitting in the, in the audience, which I heard he hasn't been coming to, I would address him, or start sending letters to him, or putting stuff in the newspaper like they did with the Commissioners, when, you know, the cave flow, the jail, and everything else, everything that we've done, you know, I don't see anybody out there doing anything, and like I said, we're talking about people's lives. Because we all know BLS can turn into ALS like that, and what happens if they need our paramedics, but our paramedics are out in the county, because you never know, you know, maybe we have to riff a few, and we don't have enough. You know, it's people's lives we're talking about, and it seems like people are more upset about some of the stuff that we did than people's lives, and that's what, I guess, irritates me a little bit.
Well, I, I mean, the frustration in this is certainly for our staff that are putting up with less than favorable working conditions.
Right.
Because of it.
Yeah.
And it's created, it's created some hostility for them between the two departments, and that's unfortunate.
Well, they had a union that was supposed to protect them, and it didn't.
I don't disagree.
So.
And that's, I mean, they've all left the union. They felt like they were underrepresented or not represented at all, and a lot of, in their words, backstabbing has happened.
Yeah.
So, I understand their frustration.
Well, I know, us three sitting up here, we appreciate you, appreciate everything that those guys do.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, thanks, Jason.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
One more, since this has been brought up. As a point of information, Ron Quaken Bush, County Council. At a luncheon a year ago last December, I sat with one of the city councilmen, and that person requested information on the expenditures of EMS, ALS. I provided that person, through the help of the auditor, his personnel, I think it was three or four years' experience, records, public records showing every dime in and every dime out for EMS. So, one city council member does have that information, and it even showed, and it's where I picked it up, the year where the back collections were brought in, and that was about $300,000, which showed that one year as a profit. The rest of the years were not big, big minus, but they were all negative. And there is one city councilman that does have that information, and I would hope that was shared with the other councilmen. And it's available if anybody wants it, just have to ask the auditor.
Thank you, Ron.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Brian Huffman. I have much smaller fish to fry. I'd just like to know if we have a mowing ordinance in the county? I'm a resident of Harrison Township, and have some issues by living in an addition, not in a farm field. I have some pictures, if you'd like to see them, maybe after the meeting, and I came to your secretary a couple weeks ago, while she was very nice, I'd just like to know where we stand.
Have you contacted the building commissioner?
Have not.
Our health department enforces our no-ordination.
Health department.
And I spoke with the director, Jim, thing about that, and it is quite a procedure, really, for them to enforce it. I think their biggest issue is lack of staffing to get right out, and, but get with me afterwards, because he responded back a big email with the full procedure in place, and I can share it with you in detail.
That'd be great.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
That is one of the frustrations of myself, because I do get a lot of calls, and back in the old days, John, that it was under, like, a trustee out in the township would be the one that you would call, and especially the officials in the farmer's fields, and things like that. But it does need to be updated, because it's, you know, passing the buck, trustees will tell you they don't have any money in their budget, and. tell you they don't have any money in their budget, and I do agree that the border help would be the place, because tall grass is not good for the farmers that are running around.
I have plenty of snakes and critters that I would love to share.
And they could put it in their budget, so good luck, and let us know.
I'll talk to her, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? You're taking a motion for a recess.
Hold.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.